What about if I hang up and dial back in? You can try. Okay. If you're on the phone, I'm gonna hang up and dial back in. And we just ask, because we're having problems with the mute button, to please mute your phones yourselves so we don't hear you in the meeting until it's time to speak during public comments. Hanging up now and I apologize for the inconvenience.
Welcome to the audio conferencing center. Please... You are now joining the meeting. You've been muted. To unmute yourself, press star six.
Yeah, you can press star. Tell them to press star six to unmute.
You are no longer muted.
If you're on the phone, please hit star six to unmute yourself. Can someone speak? Make sure you can hear us. I just heard something.
Yeah.
Okay, alright. So, we're gonna go ahead and move forward with the meeting. We just had a roll call, review of the agenda. Any issues with the agenda? Or is there just a conflict of interest?
I have a question on the conflict of interest.
Yep.
If a board supervisor, when you sued the sheriff, and then you want to hire an outside counsel, is that a conflict of interest? I'm asking an attorney. Is that a conflict?
I mean, it depends on who she hires. I don't think it very likely could be because she hires the same attorney.
Lots... okay, we'll discuss that. There's a portion of discussion. So, Iowa Code allows the board to do that. It just has to go. And that's noted in the resolution. I saw that. So, we can discuss that when we get to that option. I know there's some folks that think a certain way, and I'm sure we'll hear about that. But we'll discuss it as a board regarding that when we get to that. Alright, so, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Some would.
Do I have a second?
I can.
All in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we are at the time for the public comment. And I know folks are on the phone. We can hear you. We're not gonna mute you because of the issues with teams right now. So, we just ask that you just kinda try to be quiet. We're gonna have folks speak here first on site. And then he will come to you, okay? Please bear with us. I appreciate your patience. Alright, anyone here that wishes to speak? Please come up to my comments, state your name and your city where you live. And you have three minutes.
Brittany Brenner, Winterset, Iowa. As citizens, we entrust our elected officials with the responsibility to act with integrity, transparency, and accountability. County supervisors wield significant authority. They oversee million-dollar budgets. They set tax levies. They implement public policy. They manage infrastructure like secondary roads and even influence key personnel decisions and economic development initiatives. Given the breadth and gravity of these responsibilities, it is imperative that those in such positions operate beyond reproach. This is why the recent conduct of Supervisor Heather Stansel raises serious concerns. Instead of cooperating fully with a standard investigative process, including the lawful review of her county business communications, some of which have been performed on her cellphone, Supervisor Stansel has chosen to sue the very institutions charged with upholding public accountability. She is doing so at taxpayer expense, attempting to shield the contents of her publicly-used cellphone from scrutiny. This begs the question. If Supervisor Stansel has conducted public business on this device and done so in good faith, what is she trying to hide? Public officials should not fear transparency unless there is a reason to be afraid. The public should not be asked to foot the legal bill for an official's attempt to avoid accountability. Fear is not a defense. It is an admission. And in public service, perception is everything. And it matters as much as reality. Supervisor Stansel's conduct undermines public trust, sows doubt about her actions, and casts a shadow over the entirety and integrity of our county leadership. We expect better. The people of this county deserve openness, honesty, and officials who are not only willing but eager to demonstrate that they have nothing to hide. I respectfully ask that you would receive and file my comments.
Do I have a motion to receive and file? Do I have a second? All in favor, please vote aye. Aye, all opposed? Motion carries. Who else would like to speak?
I'm Steve Swanson from Winterset, Iowa. Got it written down there, Heather? My understanding is there's an agenda on the agenda today to hire outside counsel because it is an emergency agenda because somebody, the county attorney, will not agree to circumvent the will of the voters, to disenfranchise them, and commit other illegal acts. So Supervisor Stansel and others are trying to hire outside counsel in order to do that. But I wanna remind you of one thing. No matter who you choose, I'm still the county attorney. And I'm still gonna be here. And any illegal actions you try to take, I'm still gonna stop that. And you can throw all the frivolous lawsuits you want in the world at me. It's not gonna change that. So, just get ready.
Anyone else wish to speak?
Laura Mathis, Maxford, Iowa. You know, I didn't plan on speaking today, but we've got... Everybody talks about honesty and trust. We have a lot of things going on in the auditor's office right now that people don't hear, people don't see. And everybody's talking about Heather Stansel this, Heather Stansel that. What about the people that are doing things that's not open and honest in the auditor's office? That is... other places just not that. We've had deception when it comes to getting the person out for being auditor. We've had deception of calling people to tell them when to bring signatures in. We've had deception of other people knowing exactly when everything is going on with everything with this election that shouldn't know anything. There's a lot of things going on in this county that people truly don't know about and that should know. The people trusted me not to say a word. But I don't sleep at night because I know things that I shouldn't know. And I think truly and honestly that those things need to come out that will set a lot of people free if the other people just do the right things. And it has nothing to do with Heather. Has nothing to do with Jess. But it has a lot of things to do with the other people in the courthouse. Thanks.
Anyone else on side wish to speak?
Yeah, sure. I'm James Phillips, Winterset. So, as it pertains to a couple of things in the agenda, I went back through some social media posts that Heather, you and Jess have posted as well as board supervisors meetings. You mentioned often about saving money, about wanting to be this pillar of social fiscal responsibility. So, I went through some of the things that have been posted about that as... and it will relate to the agenda. So, we had some CDs that came due of 1.75 billion dollars that we saved off for, I'm assuming cryptocurrency. So, we lost $76,000 in interest off that. We wanted to hire Bergman for $40,000. Ended up paying $7,500. We have up to $10,000 in the courthouse inspection. We have lawsuits. So defendants will not be working because they'll be defending themselves. So, there's an unearned cost to that. There's a high turnover and training cost to get new people up to speed. So, there's cost to that. And speaking of turnover, we had a clerk making around 18 grand a year. But then we fired her and hired someone for 30 grand a year. So, that's another 12 grand on top of the 18 that has been added since the first of the year. We had an auditor who was allowed to remain under books, getting a paycheck for months after she resigned for another $10,000 this year. We have unknown loss of county revenue due to bad publicity. We have solutions. So, after he signed the contract, we had $2,000, then another $4,000. So, that can be an ongoing cost. And in using solutions, we forget that when someone calls in from the county to use solutions, that's their time that they can't do work because they're on hold or waiting for solutions to call back. Plus, they're on the phone with solutions trying to describe the problem so solutions understands it because they're not computer people. And then there's time to resolve it. So, let's just say that's one person a week at two hours times $30 an hour. That's $3,000 a year. That's one person. But there are a lot more than one person that calls solutions each week. Let's say it's three. It's another $10,000 a year on top of what may be solutions. We have the source in his mycello diatribe when he was here with this list of things. He must have spent $17,000 out of the gate with a recurring $4,000 annually for apparel system to fix based on unsubstantiated issues. No reviews been done there. Just $17,000. And if we are to believe, Heather, you and Jess, on the cost of a special election, you have reported it costs $75,000. The last meeting we had, the elections deputy said, "If you hurry, you can get the treasurer on the special election", which would save us $75,000 based on your estimates for another special election, which we didn't do. Which leads us to the outside counsel, which looking at the resolution is just for certain things. No statement of work. No cost breakdown. That could be $10,000 or $100,000. It is an open check. See that part? So, thank you for your fiscal responsibility. $300,000 this year that you're gonna cost us.
Anyone else wish to speak?
Well, the $75,000, I can tell you...
Hey, wait a minute.
Adam Laura. Excuse me, excuse me. You are not running this meeting. Please, please, I...
I'm so putty stew.
Will you let me speak?
Sorry.
Anyone else wish to speak?
Yes.
Oh, we still have one person here. I will get to the phone if you would just be a little bit... Just a little bit. Thank you.
Tari Phillips, rural Madison County. I am very concerned about the fact that the IT director's gone. As a constituent who has her personal information, I'm sure social security number, because I'm a registered voter in the system. You hired a third-party organization. You guys can't even get the phone system to work. Who's protecting our personal information? Who's doing the cybersecurity? Who's making it so somebody's not breaking in and getting our social security numbers, our dates of birth, and gonna go ahead and do identity thefts? I think that's a huge issue that has been missed in this whole process in hurrying up to hire a third-party, who I see that we have over $2,000 of training, but we were told it wasn't gonna cost any additional and we were gonna save money. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak?
Pat Naigman, Winterset. And somebody, I went out and got signatures on that petition, talked to several people. And out of the half a dozen people I talked to that did not sign it, three of them said, "Well, I've been told it costs $75,000 for a special election." And I said, you know, "Where did you hear that?" And they wouldn't speak up. The deception was put out there. It's $75,000 and it's totally untrue. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak? Okay, I'm gonna move to phone then. Is anyone on the phone wish to speak?
Yes.
Alright, go ahead.
Hannah Davis, Winterset. Heather, I just wanna follow up as I still haven't received any response to my outreach on the last board of supervisors meeting and the following two. And I still haven't received any response as to how you determined the auditor you supported in the previous month was the most qualified candidate. So, I look forward to hearing feedback on that. Jess, I wanna say thank you for following up with me after the last board of supervisors meeting and acknowledging my concern about the issue with the call-in. I am still waiting to hear back on what solutions have been discussed and teams appear to be in a queue for the supervisors. Finally, as my father-in-law would say, "Don't pee down my back and tell me it's raining." Heather, you've done nothing to rein in spending and now you wanna spend even more on outside legal counsel. Not lying to us and do your job. Just as a reminder, you work for us. Please receive and file my comments.
Motion received and filed. So moved. Alright, second. Alright, moving second. All in favor, please vote aye. Aye, all opposed? Motion carries. Is there anyone else on the phone that wish to speak? Alright, going once. Going twice. Alright, we are gonna go ahead and move forward.
I would hope that they're voting.
I'm sorry.
Hello?
Hello, go ahead.
Oh, yes. It's my understanding, my name is Daniel Duggan, and I am not a resident of Madison County, but I'm a registered DLP member out of Polk. And I will...
I'm sorry, ma'am, I'm sorry to interrupt. I'm sorry to interrupt you. Would you mind repeating your name for our board clerk?
Oh, yes. I'll spell it for you, Heather.
Okay.
Danielle, D-A-N-I-E-L-L-E, Duggan, D-U-G-G-A-N. You can call me Dan. Anyway... Can... is that ever going into my card, right?
I'm sorry, ma'am, what?
Okay, let me get it started. I didn't want that to go into my card.
No, no, it doesn't.
All I wanna say is that when somebody... All I want to say is that somebody's looking from the outside with situations in, I know in my heart that the 15,000 citizens of Madison County do not represent the complete and utter dysfunction that is currently on the board of supervisors. You have an upcoming budget election. And it sickens me to know that Heather and Jess are sitting there because of 500 votes. I urge every single citizen in Madison County to tell your families, tell your... Take the elderly neighbors to these halls and show these people there that they no longer will be running anything. And you know what? Stansel is a noxious weed. And Jess, shame on you for the way you talked to her. It's gross. And Heather, don't even get me started on you. You should consider taking your medication and considering resignation. Right now. You'll never win an election again. It's hell. Huge loser Alex, I'm not Ian Stumpferson, camp two weeks. Have a great day. Thank you.
Alright, anyone else wish to comment on the phone? Otherwise, let me go on to the next agenda item. Alright, we'll move on.
I'd like to comment on FEMA's statements. So... Public comment.
As the board... as the board of supervisors, she can comment as she wishes. Go ahead. It's not allowed? It's our meeting, Jess. Yeah. So, I'm not sure where this CDs thing is coming from, $76,000 loss. I talked to Kylie specifically, our acting treasurer, and asked if she was aware of where that number came from.
Interest. Interest.
Based on what investment?
It wasn't invested. It was just sitting there. And so, it didn't get any interest.
So, yeah, these accusations...
That's how that works.
These accusations about cryptocurrency? How was that gonna happen?
You had Craig Bergman here to talk to the treasurer. That part.
Yep, okay. So, anyway... So, I'll continue. You know, the special election cost is $75,000.
You don't know that.
No, no, no. The statement, that statement, that's not accurate. I got information directly from our elections deputy. She told me exactly what you write regarding those costs. So, take it up with her if y'all have a problem with what she told me.
She told him not to publish that, actually.
No. I was on the phone with her and I...
Yes, she did.
No.
Yes, she did, Jess, don't lie.
No.
You guys stop lying. I'm kind of lies and I'm not gonna listen to you. They're not gonna be quiet. They're not gonna take me out.
Please, please, we need order in this meeting.
So, she has...
Stop lying.
She does the floor.
And I have to answer her lies.
She's not lying.
Yes, she is lying, Lauren.
No, she's not lying.
You don't even know what the hell... You don't even know how to do payroll, so this is...
I do have to do payroll. Why don't you get lying?
Give them order.
Give them order. Give them order. Come on, I send text messages too. Come on, let's go.
You don't have anything on me?
Oh, yes, I do.
Okay. We're better than them. Don't be serious, please. Out of order, please. If you guys cannot control yourselves, I will clear the room.
I'll address my...
So, I'll address the inaccuracies on my pages later. Let's move on. Okay, so, we are up to the point of discussion of the OPIAD contract. I worked with Turning Point and I had expressed some concerns about the contract. They got them clarified. They got it fixed. So, I'm happy about that. So, I don't know if the board had a chance to look over the contract. I did, and I still ask the question, who's on the task force? We had a task force member emailing the board asking who's on the task force that she was not involved and did not know what this plan was. She called me last week and said she was a no vote on this because she didn't have the information. So, who's on the task force? Can anybody answer that?
She never showed up to the meetings.
One meeting, she told me.
No, there were more than that. In the summer, she didn't have childcare. So, she didn't show up to the meetings.
Well, she told me she only missed one meeting. So, I guess either way, to be as... So, who's on the task force? Can we talk about that? Are we okay with the contract? I'm okay with the contract, but has the task force seen it? So... Has Lauren seen it? So, one of the things that I wanted to talk about is currently under the resolution of the task force, the members of the task force are the sheriff, our EMT director, a board member from public health, a supervisor, which is Diane, and then we have a member of the public, which is Jeff from Montross County. So, those were the appointed members last year, last spring. And they were tasked only to review applications and bring them to the board for approval. That is their only role. Their role is not to do anything else. So, if according to this contract, obviously, that responsibility is gonna change a bit because on there, they have some more responsibilities of oversight. So, in order for us, I mean, we can approve this contract if the board likes it, but we would have to do another resolution to change the role of the task force. Because right now, that is not... They do not have an oversight role per resolution that we passed last February and another one when we appointed the members, I believe, April last year. So, we would... the board would have to do a resolution changing that role. And then, of course, we didn't wanna talk to the members and making sure that's okay, that they're okay with the responsibility of oversight. Now, I did reach out to John from ICAP to make sure that even though this is not a statutory rule, it would still be covered by our insurance. And he confirmed it would be. So, don't have that worry. So, they would, you know, that would be covered with the insurance, the members of the board. So, it's up to the board supervisors. If we want the task force to have the responsibility, if we want a different entity to have responsibility, on this contract right now, they have the ability to approve additional funds, which I know we discussed about that, but it'll still have to come to the board of supervisors as a resolution to pass. So, right now, we already passed the $100,000. They have up to $180,000. So, the task force would come to us and say, "Okay, we're gonna approve another 20," or however they're gonna do it. And then the second thing is to, they're gonna have some kind of oversight capacity of reports. So, right now... And the task force is okay with that?
We always were, yes, ma'am. We've lost one member. We've lost one that I don't think will come back.
Who's that?
But I'm not gonna say, member of the public.
So, we can appoint another person. So, we need to get that on for next week?
I think the task force can appoint another person, can't we?
No, the board supervisors appoints the task force there yet. Not the task force itself. Y'all make your recommendation on that. We can all make a recommendation and we can review that. And then we'll need to update the role of the task force so they know they have direction from the board going forward. And then, but back to the contract. Did you guys have a chance to review it? Any questions? Any concerns? Are we okay moving forward with it? No, my concerns were just laying out the financials and what that looked like and indemnification for the county. Those are covered. So, I have no issue with this. Okay, okay. So, I think they've already pre-signed it. So, if you guys are okay with that, you know, when we get to the resolution, we can approve it and then I can sign it. And then we'll sort out... The task force will sort out those details and who they need to appoint? Because it's gonna be a while before they submit reports and before they ask for more money. So, we have time. So, it doesn't necessarily, we have to rush it. So, we'll give you time to, you guys to consider who you'd like to appoint to the task force. That was why this is on here as a discussion point. I wanted to make sure we had a robust discussion before we go to the resolution. Any other questions on the contract? Okay. Alright, the next agenda item is discussion of retaining outside counsel for the county with possible same-day resolution approval by declaring it an urgent and emergency business under rule number 40... Rule number four, that's our procedural rules that we go by as a board and just pending rule 10A. This is on here as two separate items to discuss and then separate resolution. I put the resolution on there. Doesn't necessarily have to act on it, but it has to be on the agenda for us to even consider it. So, I put it on there. We can certainly table it. So, why this is on here is because of the circumstances that have been going on lately. We... I can't speak for the board, but I can speak for myself, is that I've lost trust and confidence in the advice we're getting from our county attorney on board actions. We were told that the task force was dissolved. It was not dissolved. We were told that our county attorney was a member of the task force. He is not.
Well, he sits on it.
You know, he's not... he was not a member of the task force.
I'm the person that files the reports. That's what I've always said, Heather. A, B, the task force texted me and told me they dissolved. Every member of it texted me and told me they dissolved. That's why I said they dissolved.
Well, I told, spoke to a member and said she had never heard of that.
The member that wants the money to go to your church, yes. She never talked to me.
First of all, that's not true.
That's 100% true.
So, this is another reason why I've lost trust and confidence is we get...
Because I won't let you do illegal things, Heather. Is that why? Because I won't let you violate the law.
We also get board advice that's caused a lot of this drama, which are specifically regarding the appointment of the...
Which advice is that, Heather? Do not publish that?
So, at this point, I think that we might wanna consider that. The legislature allows us to do that. And this way, we can remove any kind of advice we get for the board outside of any kind of bias or any kind of politics or any kind of drama. And we can be confident in the advice getting used.
You want to find someone that agrees with everything you say?
So, what I reviewed is there's not a lot of... There's not a lot of firms that do that. So, they have to balance the... So, they have to balance the, they have to balance, um, um, not only just normal administrative stuff, but also, uh, statutory law. So, there's about a dozen. So, there's four ones that got back to me. There's one, it's, uh, Beal and McCormick, I spoke to one of their attorneys. Uh, and I Master Good, they're the largest firm in the state, um, that does that. Um, yeah, I spoke to one of their attorneys. Brick and Gentry, uh, spoke to one of their attorneys. And then Whitfield, Whitfield and Eddie, uh, I did not get back to them, I left a message. Two of these attorneys, uh, have already sent me documentation on what they can offer. Um, I'm more than, um, if you want, the board wants their contact information, information on that, I can send that to you. Um, so far, uh, there were a few other firms I talked to, but they only did things like, um, workman's comp or HR or, um, they did employment law. We already have a firm that does our employment stop hours. So, uh, so these are the ones that I actually spoke to, and, um, they seem to be able to provide that service.
How much does it cost?
Uh, they did not get back to me on all that, because that's something that they negotiate. Two of the ones that, that did was, the first one was, um, two hundred dollars an hour, and the other one was about three hundred five dollars an hour, but they said it can be negotiable.
Who pays that?
They just need to know, they just need to know who.
So, the taxpayers get to pay two hundred dollars or three hundred dollars an hour, when we can walk upstairs and ask him? Two hundred dollars an hour?
As I noted earlier, Diane, we had issues, and I lost confidence.
Is that even a budget? You have issues.
Did you budget for that?
This is, Heather, this is so irresponsible. You're billing taxpayers.
Diane, you're assuming, you're assuming the taxpayers are going to afford this. We can cut spending elsewhere, awesome.
Oh, nice try. Chapter sixty-six.
Still taxpayer money.
So.
To take from somebody to hire your own lawyer.
So you have a purse-
I didn't say services.
You said cut budgets.
I said cut spending.
Let's be honest, you're going to cut services, so you have a pride of lawyer. That's how this looks.
This is not a pride of lawyer. I can't, it's the board's lawyer.
No.
No, it's your lawyer.
No.
The rest of us don't need a lawyer, we just follow the ru- rules and laws.
The board's lawyer is here.
Yes, okay.
I never needed a lawyer.
Diane?
Chapter sixty-six.
What's Heather?
Diane, this is a board decision.
I know, it's two against one, so you have a conversation.
So, we, I can't, there's lots of, I can't talk about it because of legal matters, but-
Yeah, because you're suing the county, you're suing us.
This point, uh-
You're suing us.
So, how would you, uh, like to proceed on this?
Well, clearly, we don't have a working relationship with the county attorney, unfortunately, right now.
I do, I get along fine, I'm just asking the question.
Is it my turn or not, Diane? I apologize.
People don't ask you to break the law, we have to break the law.
So, yeah, and I've asked you to find the law and put it in writing for me, and you refuse. You, you want to give me your hurdles, so, so anyway, so I think that the best interest of, is to get a second opinion, non-biased outside party, to help us navigate this, especially regarding this appointment. Is this even, all valid now? For sure.
What appointment?
I think we need, I think we need a second.
What appointment?
You did so well.
Okay, so, anyway.
So, um, so, disaster. We can, we can, um, we can table the resolution and give folks a chance to look at these firms. You can do your own research if you want, um, but this is something that I think we can, we need to move forward with. Because I, I want the board to have confidence in the legal advice we're getting, um, so we're not, so the decisions we make as a board going forward are based on, uh-
Law.
Law and acting early in.
Not a board.
And I don't, um, at this point, I don't feel that we're getting that.
Yeah, I'm sure you don't, as you sue the county.
Point of order.
Point of order.
I insist.
Point of order, I will clear the room.
Maybe not breaking the law.
I will clear the room, you guys keep interrupting. This is a board, this is a board discussion right now, public comment was earlier.
You work for us.
I ask you respectfully to please be quiet, so we can continue our board discussion, please, thank you. Jess?
You allow the supervisor to respond to public comment, you hope it's like you have a-
No, that's not how this works.
This is kind of how it works.
How it works, dictators, Diane.
Yes, ma'am. Okay. All right, so, how do we want to move forward on this?
Can I ask a question?
Well, I've talked with, um, uh, several attorneys, a lot of attorneys, and, and gotten their thoughts and, I guess, interview them on their phone, and I have somebody that I feel that would do a good, a good job. Oh, surprise, surprise.
Who is that?
You, you did.
Vicki? Yes. Go ahead and target me, call my name out. I am tired of being targeted by you, Supervisor Stansell. I am the only person, I am the only person in this room during public comment that you ever call out my name. Other people have you, other people have commented, and you only singled me out and called me by name, which is targeted. You are targeting me with a pilot.
I, I oppose. All right, we are in recess for five minutes.
I voted A on recess. You didn't even ask me, but I vote A.
As the phone participants, this is unacceptable, the meeting should end now.
All right, so we are in recess for five minutes.
Your range should end now.
Ooh, we're in time.
Let it be noted that the phone participants were removed from the meeting, penalized.
Probably better know that in the meeting.
They're not removed from the meeting, they just can't-
Yeah, they have been.
No.
They're still in the meeting.
They're still in the meeting.
They have shut off the phone audio.
Almost, I'm like.
They are speaking.
I just, a lot of them have their own mute on, anyway, so I haven't done anything. Just stay on, we're to recess for five minutes.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you, but I don't think they can hear us, I don't know what's going on.
Well, they can't. I texted somebody, I texted somebody that's in the meeting and told them that, uh, phones cannot hear, it's unacceptable, and that the meeting should end. We are part of the public, we should be allowed to be in this meeting.
They can't hear me.
Yeah, they just kicked all of them off.
I have three pages of people still on. Yeah, but they-
That's not working, that's probably not working.
But nobody touched it, I don't know what happened. Nobody touched anything.
This is ridiculous, what a freaking clown show.
So, if people log off and then they come up and re-unmute them, so.
But they're not hearing it, we can hear our- They're saying they can't hear us.
I know, but I hate muted people, and then they come off and they come back in, so that's why they need talking. This is my point, but I know we didn't, I literally just got on my computer and it's like, they can't hear us.
The media's still on.
Well, I'm, I don't know, it's on the-
Well, we should, we should, we won't take much longer, for the rest of the stuff on hand.
Here's somebody that said it cares.
It might be here.
Did you tell them it'd be here?
He said, no one can hear on the phone, hear anything, maybe I can. We can, we can hear you, we can hear you, but they can't hear us. Hey, James, how come they can hear us and we can't hear them?
No, they can't hear us, we can hear them.
I know, but why, do you know why we can't hear them? Would you, we, we can hear them, we can hear them, they- I know.
I have not counted them.
You what? No, we have not counted them.
You just seemed to-
That's nothing that happens, I'm saying it's definitely like-
You're, Vicki, you're, are you, what number? Well, you're just a- You're, you're moving, arguing stars.
So, try, yeah. So, I should not hang up on them.
There you go.
Can you hear us? Can you hear us?
Yeah. Yes, we can.
Thank you.
What did we miss?
Nothing.
We're in recess right now for another, well, here, not even. I would ask you folks on the phone to please mute, we're going to be going into the meeting again.
They can't hear you.
No, they can't do it.
Yes, they can.
Okay, all right. We're out of recess, uh, right now, is the board okay? Yeah, we're going to go back in, uh, to your meeting, out of recess, do I have a motion to go back in the meeting?
Okay, they're saying they can hear now.
Okay, good. Do I have a motion to, uh, do I have a second to go back in the meeting, second? All in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Aye, I'll oppose, motion carries. All right, we are back in the meeting, so, um, we were talking about, uh, the, the options for retaining outside counsel. If we, if the board does want to vote in resolution today, we'd have to do a motion to suspend our current rule, um, four and rule ten A, and, uh, because the cur- those current rules require that we have discussion first, and then we, uh, and then we do it in the next, the decision to the next meeting. So, for the majority vote for our, per rules, we can suspend those and vote the same day as we discuss. So, it's, it's entirely up to the board. Um, I gave my feedback on the four firms that I think would be good, um, to provide that need, should the board decide to do that. Otherwise, and of course, it certainly would not, uh, it certainly would not eliminate our county attorney's role. Uh, it's just the board would choose, if we have questions, we can go, we have a third party to go to with questions, uh, board matters.
Would you, um, entertain allowing, um, an employee to have the floor for a second?
Uh, no.
It's about our personal safety in our office, because, you know, we want to reallocate the money for this private attorney, but the roof is literally falling down on top of our desks, on top of us. Um, our documents, our public records are getting ruined by water damage because nobody's fixing it, but all of a sudden we have-
He's had, he's had that company come twice.
Yeah, our documents are ruined, um, our furniture is ruined, the ceiling panel is falling on top of our heads. Uh, we can't hire somebody because we cannot put them in a space in our office. And it has been brought to attention multiple times, um, so I'm just curious, is there going to be any reallocated to fix that situation?
So, it was, uh, we allocated money to, to replace the roof, and as I understand, that was done.
Not correctly, because it's falling on top of our heads.
I spoke to Chip yesterday, it's the first time we heard, I heard of it, I don't know if any other board, other board members have heard of this. And it has been brought, it has not been brought to meeting.
We fixed it, New York's doing it.
We have fixed it, so what we need to do is we need to figure out why it keeps leaking.
I know of that ongoing, of the keep of it.
It wasn't allocated, it was an insurance claim on the roof.
We, we, we paid money towards it.
Yeah, we paid a little bit of it, but it was mostly insurance that paid for the roof.
Okay, well, if, if, but it was replaced, so if it's not done right, then we have to go back to the contractor.
They've been back three or four times since.
Yeah, they were there this past weekend, perhaps the weekend before that. Um, we're just concerned kind of about our safety, um, given that the assessor's office necessarily isn't in, um, county office per se, but Iowa code does require the board to furnish us an office space. We think that office space should be, um, safe for us to be in.
So, so, uh, I'm glad you're bringing this up now, I wish people told us this earlier.
We did.
Uh, I didn't.
Not necessarily you, because there are other people who have responsibilities that we have brought it to.
Okay.
Um, so, we have done our due diligence, um, we're trying to prevent mold from growing on the wall. Uh, we're trying to air out all of our documents that got ruined. We have had no support, we've had no follow-up, we've had nobody check in and say, oh, you know, is there anything that we can help you with? Because there seems to be a more, um, preoccupation with other situations going on right now that are kind of neglecting, um, the offices that need the support and need, um, the resources that should make a safe work environment.
I was, I would not disagree with that.
If it's okay.
I would like to find out why that's not being addressed, because it should, if it was an ongoing issue, it shouldn't come before the board. And I'm sorry that it hasn't, this is, it's now coming to the board. So, I think Diane, and I apologize for directing, I think we should probably, uh, figure out what's going on and contact that contractor.
We have, many times.
Contractor's a winner.
I will call, I will get with Chip and I'll call the contractor.
Because we need to find out why this is not being addressed.
And if we have to go legal channel, we'll have to, because he's come back like, what, girls, four times?
We've had people in our office, up in the ceilings, on ladders, we've had them on the roof, we've had them everywhere. Will come back and there's standing water on top of our filing cabinets. All of our binders are waterlogged, some of the documents aren't even readable, that are legally permanent records for Iowa code that are now ruined because of this.
So, Diane, you know, you knew about this?
Well, we've been working on it four times, we've been trying to fix it, they keep coming back because it was part of an insurance policy. So, we've all been working on it, they keep coming back, but it doesn't work, but I haven't heard of the latest. But I will work with Chip and we'll get them called.
He told me this yesterday, that's what I, that's the first I heard of it.
This is the first I've heard, but I, I will do this.
So, so now the whole board knows, so, uh, we'll, we'll address it, because that's not right.
We would like to feel safe and secure in the building.
Sure, you don't want to relocate, I'll call, I'll work with them for that.
Yeah, and it's not just our office, um, all of our offices have had damage, all of our offices have, um, it's not even like temperature controlled, the money that we spent putting in the mini splits didn't work. Like, I still have my heater running on eighty degrees every single day. But it just seems that the resources that should be allocated to the people showing up every single day and working, um, should maybe go where it counts, so we can continue, continue to show up and work and not be spent on frivolous things that really don't matter at the end of the day if our employees can't even show up to work.
Well, it, it's important for our employees to communicate to the board, so we know.
But it's a kind of a, a situation, because we feel, and I'm not speaking on behalf of everybody, my personal self, am apprehensive to approach any member of the board, regardless of politics, because I feel like there's going to be retribution. Um, given the fact that you're suing an employee, multiple employees, makes it an uncomfortable position for us employees that feel comfortable reaching out with our concerns, because we feel that there's going to be retribution, whether that's in our intention or not, is not for me to determine. Um, but we don't feel comfortable asking or coming to you or Jess or Diane, because it has been proven, there's been a precedent set now that we have to approach with caution.
But this has been an ongoing issue before any of this drama, so I'm a little confused as to why we're just hearing about it now.
Well, let's move on, I will, I'll do it for you.
So, we now know about it, and it's going to be taken care of, okay? So, uh, in the future, though, if there is issues that you feel are not being taken care of, would you mind getting something on, you know, either public comment or getting something on the agendas, so we can address the entire board? So, we're all aware of it, because sometimes things get dropped, sometimes miscommunications happen. And this way, the whole board is aware, and we can address it as a board, because individually, we can address things individually.
Which is why I don't anticipate coming to you guys individually, I'm speaking on behalf of an employee of the county that has been, and this is not just given this current situation of things, given the current circumstances, um, this has been going on for years, um, through prior department heads, current department heads, current employees, prior employees. It is common knowledge that we are comfortable approaching because of fear of retribution, fear of consequences, um, there doesn't seem to be open communication. Uh, there's certainly not on our part a feeling of being able to approach with concerns, because clearly, the concerns are not directed at the people showing up and working every day, they're allocated for legal costs and inspections and, and whatever other things. When department heads are crying, literally sobbing because they spent less than a thousand dollars or ninety-eight dollars or anything, department heads, we are the people showing up and working every day. Through all of this, regardless of what anybody thinks, regardless of politics, we are the people here, working through this every day. We get people coming into my office, screaming at us, calling us names, it's just what it is. But we're the people that show up, and I feel like that's a huge problem that's been overlooked, is, yeah, we're employees, we're also taxpayers, so the people that you guys have sworn oath to take care of also includes us, like, we're a small subset of people, we're employees, we're taxpayers, and we should be allowed to have resources and attention paid to us, because we're the ones making this all function, we're the ones doing the work. And we've been overlooked.
So, I appreciate you coming forward and making the whole board aware of this, and now that we're aware of this, we'll make sure it gets taken care of. And I would ask any employee, please, I can't speak for previous boards, but you always have an opportunity either to speak to us one-on-one, I prefer to the board, because again, we cannot take action individually. It's always best if the board makes a decision, you know, together. Uh, if you would come to us at a meeting, or just email us, if that, just email the board and let us know there's an issue going on, so we can take care of it, and we doesn't have to come to this, we're coming to a public meeting and addressing it. Certainly with buildings and grounds, that's something that needs to be taken care of, so you guys can have a statement as to what.
So, is there a timeline that we can work out to where we can make sure that our office is safe, make sure the recording office doesn't sustain any damage?
I'll call them today, please.
Diane has admitted to calling them.
I'll call them, Bridget, and I'll get them here, and we'll make them fix it.
You made you permitted that, and the board, I'm assuming, is in unison that you're, that to chase that down and make sure that's taken care of, because we need to make sure, because I know this is the leaky, I assume that to fix this is taking- Because we need to make sure, because I know this is the leaky, I assume that to fix this is taken care of. So I, I, so if you can chase that down.
And you can always talk to them.
We need to be more of a, um, an offensive approach because really what it seems like is that we're waiting for something bad to happen and then cleaning up the mess when it happens. Instead of putting things in place to prevent them from happening in the first place.
Right, okay, right. So we're going to take care of that. All right, so a little off topic, I apologize for that, um, but it was important to hear, so thank you for speaking up on that. So, uh, any further discussion on, uh, retaining outside counsel or is the board ready to move to resolutions?
What services we've cut to pay for?
So, um, move to resolutions, okay.
Let me just point out real quick that you've been through five county attorneys in the last three years and you've worked through our employment attorneys. Maybe Heather, it's not me, maybe it's you.
Steve, you're interrupting. All right, so, uh, resolutions for board consideration. First one is approving the bank authorization changes. This is just a housekeeping item to add the current auditor onto the, onto the authorization for the banking so they can sign checks and endorse checks and do the normal things that auditors do. Removing Terry, adding him. So we did this before, um, so that's just basically a compulsory thing. Thank you for reminding us that that needs to be done, Laura, I appreciate that. So do I have a motion to approve that?
They amended one.
Oh, they amended one, that's right, okay, thank you for reminding that. So the one in the board packet that was posted was missing a word. It said endorse checks, which should say sign and endorse checks. MAC has the corrected version in hand, so that's what we'll be signing. But in the packet, it, uh, it only says endorse checks, so that change was made. Um, so do I have a motion to approve the amended version of this resolution zero, zero five two five? Someone, do I have a second? Okay, I will second that, any discussion?
Um, he's off all week, he has ten working days until the election. Why can't the first deputy just do this? Why, and then if, if he doesn't win the election, you just do it all over again, why would you do that?
Because legally he is the auditor.
For, okay, for ten days, okay.
Diane, I did call the bank on that, just so that you, I did call the bank and ask them.
And it does have to meet him for ten?
It does have to, yeah, I did, I, I did ask.
Thank you.
All right, uh, we have a first and a second, any further discussion? All in favor, please vote aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. Okay, the next one is approving year-end training for auditor and treasurer office and any issue for engineer office from Solutions. Um, the quote that's provided. Uh, Laura, this was to help clear up some issues in those three offices to help do month end, is that correct?
Month end, year end, and get the stuff that cleared up from previous.
From previous administrations, okay. So, uh, so the, and it's the engineer side as well.
No, I called him.
Yes.
It, it isn't anything to do with him.
It is. We are working on pro rates and the pro rates are clear back from, some of them are earned from twenty twenty-four and some are from now. We had one gal that did, had some issues when she did payroll, she avoided three checks. And when she did that, um, that messed up some pro rates and then Solutions is trying to fix that. But she fixed her part of it and they're having some issues with that fixing it on their side because it's more difficult. But it does, but, but they're still waiting from twenty twenty-four and then some before they have to go clear back into the other records and fix all of that. So Kylie and I match everything from the auditor side to the treasurer side, we match perfectly, no corrections at all. But, um, so we're going to go ahead and continue so we can get things going.
For year end.
For year end. And we'll just have to go back and fix all of the pro rates on the secondary board side.
Okay. Are the tax receipts out?
We will be able to get those out as soon as we get the, the year-end, or the year-end done for Kylie and I.
All right, so that's why there's, there's three separate itemized charges on here, um, auditor, the treasurer, and the engineer, correct?
Correct.
Okay, all right. All right, I will entertain a motion to approve, um, the auditor's office resolution zero eight zero five two five B.
Some votes approved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor, please vote aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. Uh, the next one is approving licenses for Faststone and Acrobat Pro. Um, and, um, we had a request to add on the four dollars and ninety-nine cents for the AI version of Acrobat Pro from the auditor. So these, this is not a contract, it's a one-time charge, it's not a monthly charge. But I asked the auditor to just put it on our agenda since we had a special meeting just in, um, so in abundance of caution so the board can approve that. So, uh, what this does is allows them to edit PDFs, add highlights, add notes, that kind of stuff. Uh, I'm not quite sure what the AI version does, um, but I mean, the Faststone is for, some kind of annotation, the ability to do annotations, so that's that nineteen ninety-five. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the licenses for Faststone and Acrobat Pro plus the four ninety-nine, four dollars and ninety-nine cent AI version for Acrobat Pro.
Some votes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
May.
Okay. Um, next one is approving amended MOU for opioid settlement award to Turning Point Evaluation. Do I have a motion to approve?
Some votes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please vote aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. All right, I, what I'll do is I'm going to sign this and send that over to Turning Point because I know they've been anxious for this, so. All right, thank you for everyone's patience on that. All right, the next one is approving the vacancy of county treasurer office to be filled by appointment. Um, and I know that there was, um, some frustration on this and the hopes we could get it into the same, um, election. Unfortunately, due to timing and Iowa code, that was impossible. It's not possible to. So, um, so, so what we did, what we did before is we, uh, we have to, we have, we receive the resignations, we accept the vacancy, which is what this is, and then on there, everything's blank because I didn't know what people wanted to say. So if we want to move to a, a point, we can certainly do that. In the past, historically, what we've done is we post for the job for ten days, we interview, and then we make the customer. So that's what we did for our county attorney, that's what we did for our auditor. And it's, uh, it's not something we have to do, but it's entirely up to the board and what they want to do. So it's kind of blank out here based on your decision, so did you guys want to discuss that?
Since you really only have sixteen months for another election, I would probably, because we're in so much turmoil and things, the treasurer's office, I only have one, I wish you wouldn't close at noon because there are people, you know, stagger your lunches, but I would just leave Kylie in to not cause more turmoil. And then at the election, she'll have to win on her own, but now there's, what, sixteen months and twenty-six, so I would probably leave her in. She's doing fine, there are any complaints?
I have no problems appointing, rather, so you're saying we should appoint and not interview?
I, I think, I think we're just in so much turmoil.
Because even if we appoint, the people still have a right to.
I know, to, to, yes, they could, they could petition. I, I think we should maybe leave her in the position, and if, if they so choose, I would honor that too, but I think she's doing okay.
They could say there's certain sense, but I think she's doing great.
I do too, and I think, but stay open at noon, because I'm, they yell at me, so, you know, I get yelled at too.
So, uh, so what are your thoughts, Jess?
No, I agree, I think Kylie's doing great and I think she may, we need to let her continue to do that, try to sort through the mess she was dealt.
Because it's so close to, you know, sixteen months in the next election, so then they can speak, but I don't think we should disrupt it.
So we need to send the board to just appoint and not post for the position, not interview?
To keep Kylie in the position.
Okay, the citizens still have a right to petition for a special election.
Okay, so being that the case, um, the, the resolution's written to where we can just fill that out. So, um, the, we have to post for the position, um, and notice of the fourteen-day, uh, the citizen's right to call a special election. So we have to figure that out and the dates here and how we do that. So if we, I don't, it might be too late to get into the paper today.
It has to be in by noon. Well, no, today's too late.
Yeah, today's too late. So we can appoint, if we, we can get it published in the Madisonian next week. Uh, and then we can maybe appoint on maybe August nineteenth. What do you guys think of that? So we get in the vote in the Madisonian on the thirteenth of August. We can send the notice back to them now, make sure it's done. And then it'll be in the Madisonian on the thirteenth and then we can, that will have the one, two, three, four. You have to add between four and twenty days, so that would cover that, because that would be five days. So what do you guys think about that?
Going to appoint?
Going to appoint on August nineteenth.
Oh, on the nineteenth.
Does that sound okay legally?
Oh, I didn't know I was still a true.
Is that okay legally? I'm referring to you as the legal counsel.
Sounds fine, I'll have to look into it before I give a, an actual legal opinion, I can't.
So what we can do is we can approve these days contingent on the approval of the county attorney.
Yeah.
Sounds okay with that? All right, so with, so on here then, the vacancy shall be filled by appointment on the nineteenth of August.
So we're having a special?
We're going to have a special meeting for that, just for that. If the board's okay with that?
Yes.
Okay.
And then we'd know by then if the public disagrees.
Well, yeah, but then they're getting into the blackout period.
Yeah, slight public disagreement.
Yeah, so, okay, but they can still call it, it would just be like in December or January where I think it's special. Okay, so, uh, we point on the nineteenth, that means it would be published in the Madisonian on the thirteenth of August, twenty twenty-five. Okay, and then there's, I'll put on a contingent, uh, approval of county attorney. Does that sound right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so what it's going to say is be hereby resolved unless county board supervisors hereby accept the resignation of the man of the office, county treasurer, effective July fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. It has officially declared the elected office of county treasurer vacant as of July twen, July fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. And then the vacancy shall be filled by appointment on the nineteenth of August and shall be published in the Madisonian on or about thirteenth of August, contingent on approval of county attorney. That's what it's going to say. Does that sound good to you?
Yeah, as long as he approves it and picks it and it's all right.
So Mac, once we, we approve this, um, before you publish, get it from him, that it's okay, um, email. All right, so I will entertain a motion to approve, uh, SPB resolution zero eight zero five two five B.
Someone.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All, any discussion? All in favor, please vote aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. That brings us to the last, uh, resolution on, uh, for board consideration. That is the approving agreement with outside counsel for board supervisors. Again, this was placed on here, so we have the right to take action, should we choose. Um, I don't know if the board wants to look into this more. I, any of these four firms, I think, would be fine. Um, I am partial to two of them, but I think either any of the board would be fine. So.
Given experience levels, I think Valen McCormick is, would be my top choice.
What services we've cut to pay for?
Valen McCormick, okay.
Should be your sample.
So, all right.
I am a hard, hard no on this. This is a terrible judicial, I mean, what, excuse me?
She's allowed to speak!
Yeah, just talk.
Pay for your own lawyers.
So, um, so again, this would only be, uh, we would have to, uh, agree as a board how to, how to give them. So let's see, for instance, if we, if it comes up again for a contract or Turning Point or something similar, um, we could go for them and ask them to write the contract if that's what the board decides to do. If we have, uh, a question on, say, a posting, like we post something, we can ask that.
Can we ask about chapter sixty-six?
We can, um, ask for that. We could also, if, you know, if we want to have an open meeting versus a closed meeting, say, okay, can this qualify for a closed meeting, can it qualify for an open meeting? So those are the kind of things, it's not going to be something to where.
Well, go upstairs and.
It's going to be mostly administrative.
Go upstairs and ask your attorney. You're paying a county attorney and now you're having outside counsel, it's not judicially responsible.
I wish we did not have to do this, Diane.
You don't, you don't.
I wish we did not have to.
You fought and fought and fought to get him elected.
Yes.
And then, and then when he doesn't say what you want, you don't like him.
We are, we are in this mess right now.
Because of you.
Because of you.
Oh, no, 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 don't throw that on me, Heather, that was a hundred percent you. I never said that you vacate the office, that was you, you emailed that to the paper, not me. I have proof, if you ever, if you want to release the emails, we can do that. You and Matt, if we release those, waive attorney-client privilege, and I'll release those today.
There's already been open records requests for it.
There's attorney-client privilege, I can't release them without a waiver.
So, um.
This is on you.
So clearly, this is not a working, working relationship right now.
Well, you're speaking on. Because of you.
I would like to have some options. Um, you know, Mr. Swanson has talked about how.
Resign.
Mr. Swanson has talked about how busy he is, I would think he's in the week, so.
Because of the clown show.
So what would you, what, what would you want to do? Do you want to look at the other firms, just say you had a firm?
I, I did some research and I have comfort level with.
Are you going to do bids?
I can do bids.
Three bids.
So.
Do three bids.
And vetting?
So, um.
Are these political attorneys?
So let's move on here. So how do you want to handle this? Do you want to, because right now the resolution is to select someone.
Any chance the part of the Kirkwood Institute?
Okay, we're going to be.
What we can do is we could also amend this resolution as well. Uh, we could, we could select someone and, and then, um, we could do contingent on board approval of the contract, um, because obviously there's going to be a contract. So we can do that, we can do it as, kind of like we did with Turning Point, we approved, we, we did stepped approach, we approved.
The public doesn't want this.
And then we approved the, um, the actual.
What's your?
Well, the information that I have and the backstory and a lot of that behind-the-scenes communication, the public's not privy to. Um, I think this is what's best for the county.
Well, Megan, let us know what we need to know.
We're privy. Let's get three bids.
You make me get three bids, you need three bids.
Moving forward on this, because I think the sooner the better.
Is it in the budget?
Do you want those, want the lowest-priced lowballer for something so important?
Well, you make me get three bids.
We're paying for it.
Why don't you do it?
You pay for it.
Get a bid and see how you can bunch and talk them down.
Well, we can talk them down, we can talk them down right now, I mean.
It sounds like this is decided, it's not being decided.
No, there, there's four firms, and again, as I said earlier, there's not a lot of firms out there that do this.
You think?
Because it's, somebody wants to work with you.
It's beyond business.
So, um, because of their experience, so.
Suing government.
These, the, yeah, these, no, it's not. I didn't know that.
Find the name, you know it's true.
I do know that, I've worked for government, I do know that.
Yes, I know, we all know their career. So we, you're, you're.
Oh, Jess, stop, Diane, it's all.
This is about protecting the.
You're not a career government employee? Oh, my word, you are an embarrassment.
Okay, so, so are you okay with a stepped approach? I think I'd be more comfortable with that, because we have time to negotiate.
Let the public vote on it before you do it.
So, so.
Good idea.
How are you paying for this?
You're going to buy you a court group?
Yes.
All right, well, that's one of the four that I thought would be good. So.
You're spending more money on these lawyers than you care about the safety of the building here.
Uh, if, if folks keep continuing to talk.
Your lawyer's right there.
Do it.
I, I respectfully request that you please.
You just listened to what she said.
Just ignore it. Okay, so.
Just ignore them. Yep, we feel that, we feel it. Just ignore them, can I put that on your campaigns?
Should we point out, they said, the, this right here just says at the rate of, do you want to say negotiating to the attorney by the board?
Yes.
Let them have their cake. You two need to go somewhere else.
Yeah, yeah. This is just so embarrassing.
Okay, all right, so let me read that. It says, um, and then so the second part would be crossed out. So, okay, I'll wait. So, okay, I'll read again, whereas House File eight sixty-two, pending Iowa Code three three one dot seven five five, authorizes that county board supervisors by the authority of vote to retain outside legal counsel to represent the board or any county official, and whereas the Madison County Board of Supervisors has determined that circumstances exist where engaging independent legal counsel is in the best interest of the county, and whereas the Madison County Board of Supervisors therefore seeks to engage outside legal counsel for certain county government matters. Uh, therefore, be it resolved, um, the board is reviewed and selected Val and McCormick by legal services at uh, a negotiated rate determined by the board, does that lead, okay, and then the second part, um.
This is for your personal interest, though.
The second part, how do you wanna handle the second part? So just we put Val and McCormick in there as well?
Yeah.
Okay, and then, there we would put the negotiated rate rather than the fee.
Yeah.
Okay.
Respectfully, Bill, which services would you cut to pay for this?
Where's the money coming from?
Be approved by the supervisors.
She doesn't care about the taxpayers.
Speaking of rhythms.
Uh, okay, so, we'll go ahead, I'll reread that for the boards, um. Okay, the board hereby approves engagement of Val and McCormick to act as outside legal counsel to Madison County Board of Supervisors under the authority of Iowa Code three three one dot seven five five as amended by HF eight sixty-two, the board approves a negotiated fee to be approved by supervisor board um, at a later time, does that sound okay to you? Alright.
Make it a magic hour.
And then what I'm gonna do, what I'm gonna do is, uh, the other one where it says engagement letter, I'm gonna strike that, because that means to be approved by board. Okay, so, um, so number three is stripped out, Mac, have you been catching a more? Okay, I have a bunch of notes here. Alright, so, um, do I, uh, I will entertain a motion to approve this resolution zero eight zero five two five C as amended. Do I have a second? I will second that, any discussion?
Rule call.
All, all.
With Diane being part of every communication at pre-meeting with that's turning.
Aye.
Aye.
Which is nay.
Okay, so, uh, the ayes have it, resolution zero eight zero five two five.
Shame on you, shame on you.
And is there anything else, if there's nothing else for the board to consider and discuss, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Pay for yourself.
Second, alright, I'm first and a second, all in favor to adjourn, please vote aye. Aye, all opposed, motion carries, we are adjourned, thank you everybody.